Good evening and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education of June 18th. We'll have the pledge of allegiance to the flag and a moment of silence. A moment of silence this evening is for Mary Cluckey, who was a Jerusalem cook, and for Sharon Harrison, who was an elementary teacher who retired from Jerusalem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a roll call, please, Mrs. Grue.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Here.
Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
And Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Please, silence all personal electronic devices during the meeting. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as written, please.
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item five, public participation at board meetings. Do you have any cards, Mrs. Grue?
I have none.
Okay, thank you, we can skip that. Please be advised that this meeting is being audiotaped and will be available on the district website. On to item six, staff and community recognition and a presentation.
Absolutely. All right, well, this is, this is a recognition that is amazingly deserved. So I'm going to invite up Mrs. Ben and Tony, come on up, and Sean, come on up. And, you know, it's kind of a small audience inside, but maybe a bigger audience outside. But, you know, the board's well aware of why you're here. And, uh, come on over here a little bit. And I'll let you guys talk about the specifics. But, but we cannot thank Sean Ferguson. This is Sean Ferguson of Trek, um, or Track, I'm sorry. And he, he has represented a family out of California, Richard and Marie Leonard, is that how you say it?
Leonard.
Leonard, Leonard, that's right, Leonard, who gave us a extremely generous donation of two large machines that will be used with our students. So they could talk more about that, but to a tune of about $110,000. And, and so we wanted to certainly present that to the board and thank Sean and, and tell you a little bit about this donation and, uh, and just make it as, as big of a deal as we can. So, uh, why don't you talk a little bit about, you know, the machines or have Tony do it, however you want to do it.
Well, the machines are, uh, they're a milling center, um, CNC milling center, which means there's a automatic tool changer. It's a brand new state of the art. Um, Sean can actually, uh, talk a little deeper technology wise. But, uh, uh, it's got a touchscreen control panel. Um, it's basically what's out in industry. And, um, these are donations not of an old machine that's sitting in a shop. These actually came right from the factory. So we have the milling center and a turning, a lathe, CNC lathe. Um, and again, uh, you know, it was a, a, a great surprise to be donated. Uh, I, I didn't know how to thank Sean. This is incredible. It really changes the, you know, the layout of our room, what it looks like, what it'll, what it'll mean to the students. Um, again, this is what's in industry today. Um, we got rid of some old equipment, some, some, uh, machines from the 1950s that we still had. So those, those went bye-bye and they, they served their purpose. But, uh, we're, we're caught up with, with the real world now. So, um, again, Sean Ferguson is the one who, he wrote the letter to Richard and Marion Leonard and, um, said why Clay High School would be deserving of this. And, uh, Sean?
So, um, this isn't the first time I've been standing in front of everybody here. Um, we were able to get a donation program into Clay High School 2021. Um, got a couple of emails and lays into Tony's facility and he did such a great job with everything. Um, Rich and Marion came to me this year and said, who should we donate to? And I thought it was a known brainer and Clay High School, here we are. So, um, Tony, Becky, Hal have all been thanking me over and over again, but all I did was 20 minutes worth of letter writing. It was everybody here, Tony's hard work over the last years, Becky's hard work, Hal, everybody here who's supported Tony in his endeavors and his program. It was easy on our part. It was all of your years and years of dedication and hard work to the community and your students. And I can't find a shop between Lorain County to Toledo that doesn't have one of Tony's students in it. So, happy to do it. Can't think of a better program. And if no one, if you don't know exactly what was donated or you haven't been down to the shop down there, go take a look. In a couple of weeks, as soon as those machines are up and running, they're gonna be, they're gonna be putting on a show. It's gonna be really, really cool. You have the latest, probably the latest technology in any high school in North America right now, right here at Clay High School.
Wow, that's saying something.
They're about the most decked out of any high school in the nation. So, happy to be here.
And I also want to add that on August 15th is Clay High School's open house. But we're gonna be doing a special open house in machining that night from 6:00 to 8:00. So we hope that you guys join us. We'll be sending out invitations as it gets closer. Um, but we're gonna invite the community and the students and the parents and graduates and things like that. So just to showcase how great the lab looks.
So Sean, again, congratulations. I got a little certificate here, which is, you know, just a little token here. But if you guys will get in front of here, the three of you, we're gonna get a picture so we can just, we also have a certificate that we're gonna mail out and a thank you to the Leonard's and, uh, you know, we want to do everything we can for them.
Put some, uh, football tickets in there.
Yeah, we'd love to get them back here. I don't know if that'll happen, but.
Community sports mask.
So again, Sean, thank you for all your work and just constant support. And, uh, you know, we, we are very proud of our career tech. It always been proud of Tony's program for, for a long, long, long time. And we know what it means to the kids that take it. So, um, and that's what you're saying. It's like, you know, those kids are coming out of here and going, doing the work that makes the machines or it makes the companies grow, that makes the machine, you know, they can buy machines, right? I mean, that's that circle of life with what we do and what you do. So thanks for coming out and making the trek down here today. Congratulations and thank you, Tony and Becky for being out here.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ferguson. We really, 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 really appreciate you. And I hope you enjoy our weather.
Wonderful.
Well, we have him outside of Monty Bay walking around, so I think you will.
Compared to Northern Michigan.
Fantastic, right? Okay, I skipped over one item here. At this time, the board welcomes comments on how the Oregon City Schools utilize their Title VI funds for the 24-25 school year. So if there's anyone who has any comments?
And these are federal dollars that are used to support special education, uh, around the district. And it's a federal grant that, uh, we use to support teachers, support administration, support supplies, equipment. I mean, it's just a number of things, so. Don't think we have anyone here for that, but.
Okay, thank you. And moving on to item seven, the treasurer's report.
Uh, thanks, Mrs. Mulnar. Um, this report is going to be primarily housekeeping in terms of its year end. Um, so to start with, I have the report in front, in your folders. I wanted to just make a point, um, to, um, talk about how we're spending our wellness dollars. It is a requirement that we, um, we'll eventually put this up on the web that we discuss how the wellness dollars have been spent. Um, there were two sources of wellness dollars. One is gonna be drying up, but the other one will be continuing because our governor feels very strongly on, on the mental health needs of students, rightly so, right now in these times after COVID. So for fiscal year '24, we still had money in the original donation of the 467 fund. Um, we had $684,400 rounding. Um, and of that 467 fund, we spent, uh, 400, almost $446,000 simply on Drescher Mental Health Counseling for, and this is completely, I believe, for our students. I don't believe any of the staff, because we have other, we have other sources. Um, harbor, we have, you know, um, some benefits that way. But, so we spent all except there is still remaining. We have to spend all this money by the end of, on June 25. We still have about $235,000, $236,000 left to spend. That will easily be eaten up, as you can tell, with Drescher. And, uh, um, Drescher costs will continue then to be able to be paid out of the funding, I'm sorry, the foundation funding. This year, with carryover and allocation from the state through our foundation monies, we received, we had $760,000, almost $769,000 worth to spend on wellness. So the items we spent it on is we are, now, we used to take our nursing, um, we have nurses in every building. We used to take that out of one of our federal grants. Now we'll be taking it out of our wellness funding, out of the general fund. We did buy a wellness dog, or I'm sorry, a comfort dog, or a, or a building dog. I might have.
Facility dog.
Thank you, facility dog. I don't have the right dog now.
Lot of different names.
Yeah. And then there were supplies for the dog, athletic training services. We had some drug screening, strength coach. Um, it's been an addition for the kids. And then a school liaison, um, kind of vaping education for our students to discourage it. And then some fingerprinting. Now, all told, for wellness this year, we spent $1.2 million of $27,000. That does not include our resource officers that we have an agreement with this city for. We, um, because we have a DPIA, which is basically disadvantaged people, it's basically an economic, um, amount of money that comes to us. We use the, um, resource officers against that money as well. We have to tell the state exactly how we're sending, spending all this, but we have to definitely tell the wellness, um, how we're exactly spending the wellness monies. And on the back of your report, you can see the actual breakdown. But I just wanted to make it clear how much we have spent on wellness this year per, as we are required to. And the rest of my report is about, um, on the year end. Um, that comes with the final permanent appropriation measures, et cetera. Uh, I labeled them, it makes no sense, but it's how they were in the agenda. You can see the final permanent appropriation measure, total appropriation. The budget was $69.5 million, the appropriation measure is $67.4 million. I did have to update the five-year forecast. The only thing I updated, um, was because, um, we had a larger purchase order. I, I, I didn't realize we hadn't correctly put the purchase order to ESAR. Um, all of the, um, air conditioning projects are coming from ESAR and they had originally been put into the PI fund. And so I had to reclassify that. So the only adjustment is I have taken, um, we had only set aside $500,000 for, um, advances and transfers, but we spend that much alone on ESAR. So I had to up it to, um, a million five or a million 207,000. And you can see I'm sending it out as advances and transfers and I'm taking it back, I'm sending it back in '24, '25. So it's an in and an out, it doesn't change the basic numbers. It's just an in and an out that we have to do. Um, then I also have the next page. You'll see the initial appropriation, um, measure for '24, '25. And you'll see those. We have a budget of $68.2 million and a temporary appropriation measure of $65 million. And then attached next is you're gonna see labeled F, the year-end advances and transfers. Advances are of course monies we send to them to cover year-end, um, purchase orders typically. And then first of July or after our first July board meeting, I asked to please send the tran, advances back. And we do that. The yellow ones are transfers that are permanent. The ones that are not highlighted are the advances. So we're advancing a million four, we're transferring 87,000. And the transfers, so you know, um, one is the PI fund. It's for the 15,000. We've been sending that every single year to help set aside monies for when we need to replace the turf. So it's not a big bite at one time. Um, the other transfers are the fees for band uniforms. We have fronted the money for band uniforms, hoping to get some monies back through the fees. We, um, athletic, I'm sending the fee money to the athletic, both Facet and Clay High School, um, athletic funds from the general fund. Those are the fees that are paid or participate fees that we collect in the general fund, but then we transfer them so we know exactly how much they're getting. So those transfers, those are the only transfers. The rest are in and out, so to speak. Um, the last item, uh, two items, excuse me. Um, the last item in my motion here, um, for, on the agenda, is that we have always waived the convenience fees. There's a charge when people pay online for their lunches and their fees, um, that we, various fees that we put on for the students. And we have waived those the last at least three years. I, I may be mistaken. Um, it, it really, um, encourages parents to pay that way. We wipe it out. It is far more efficient, the accuracy of posting and the security of the collection, um, are worth the cost of these fees. But we do need a board motion so that we're not just, you know, assuming anything, that you're all aware of that we're doing that. Um, and then the other, we've already discussed, sometimes there's a need for a special meeting at the end of the year. So we have set that now for 12 noon on the 27th. Um, hopefully it won't be necessary, but if it is, that is when we'll have it. If it becomes unnecessary, I'll call everybody. Hopefully Wednesday night, I'll send an email out to everybody, okay? Because we won't post payroll till Wednesday. So unless there are questions, that's my report. It's really all about year end at this point, making sure we're legal with the auditor's office.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the treasurer's report, please.
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Any other roll call, please?
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. And we need now a motion to waive that convenience fee for parents using paid schools for the '24-25 school year beginning July 1st. Now you have a motion, please?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion, questions? Roll call.
Okay, I'm sorry, was it Mr. Eversman who made?
Yes.
Thank you, sorry, excuse me. Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr., uh, excuse me, um, Ms., Mrs. Mulnar? Excuse me, I have all these marks.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, does anyone have a need for an executive session? Okay, we can skip through that. The consent agenda. Are there any items that members of the board wish to call from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, we need a motion to vote on the consent agenda items. Motion? I'll move. A second?
I'm waiting on you.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Same.
And Mr. Eversman?
I see why. Yes. Now I understand.
Yes. And so, Mr. Gregory?
Yeah.
Would you like to introduce?
Well, yeah, we, we have two new teachers that were just hired, so congratulations. And I'd just like to introduce you to Allison Laurel, who's back, uh, here in the maroon shirt and a family name that we know very, very well, we're out here. And we are very excited. She's gonna come to us to be a intervention specialist at Jerusalem for a new program that we're adding in. So, uh, thank you, congratulations. We're very excited for you. And we have Alyssa Fisher over here, who's our new counselor at STAR. And so we're very excited for her. And she's also, uh, lives in town and actually it's a stone's throw from the school. So she's excited to be closer to home. So we congratulate you and you have your mom with you. So congratulations and Tricia. So we're, we're very excited to have her on board and help kids going into next year. So thanks for coming out tonight, we appreciate it very much.
Welcome to the district, we're glad to have both of you. Okay, so moving on to new business. The first item are the fee schedules. They are listed on the agenda. I need a motion to approve the fees for elementary schools, middle schools, high school.
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Moving on to item B, transportation contracts. We need a motion to enter into transportation contracts with the following for the '24-25 school year. Renee Shemansky of Holly Drive to transport her children to and from Central Catholic and Notre Dame Academy. May I have a motion, please?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Um, our handbooks. We need a motion to adopt the following handbooks. The substitute teacher at Clay High School, the Clay High School Athletics, Facet Junior High, Eisenhower Intermediate, Coy Elementary, Jerusalem Elementary, STAR Elementary, and the district handbook. And that would be with a few corrections that were added today, I believe.
Yep.
Mostly, um, words that were probably misspelled by spell check. So may I have a motion, please?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item D is the City of Oregon Comprehensive Plan. The Board of Education appoints Mr. Dan Savick as its representative to the City of Oregon Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. This was requested by the city and we're happy to abide.
Some move. Second.
That's an appointment, gentlemen. So we don't have to vote.
Well, it's good that everyone's a bunch of listeners.
It's good.
Okay, item E, donations. We need a motion to accept the following donations. The Oregonian Club donated $2,500 to the Clay High School for the summer project yet to be determined. And the Oregon Northwood Rotary donated $4,500 to Facet Junior High School to help cover the cost of the seventh grade Challenger Learning Center field trips. Now you have a motion, please?
Some move for gratitude.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Uh, Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item F, disposal of materials. From Clay, we have a Jones and Larson optical comparator and measuring machine. May I have a motion, please?
Some move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Item G, disposal of equipment and materials. The items listed in the May 21st agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. And the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Mulnar. Um, just a couple of quick things. Um, we are, uh, as of tonight, thank you to the board. We've hired at least this, as of today, our, our full teaching staff for next year. So unless someone, uh, changes their mind about next year now, uh, we are in good shape, so I feel real, real good about that. And, uh, total of 13 new individuals will be joining our district in the fall, uh, various around the district, so, uh, very proud of those. Um, um, we have, uh, a few classified positions left to fill, a couple of paraprofessionals and things like that. But for the most part, uh, we're, we're all done with the hiring. So I just want to give a big thank you to all our principals, our directors, teaching staff, all those folks that, that take part in that hiring process. Uh, it's, it's the key thing we do, right? Hiring good people is, is everything to a school system. So thank you to all those folks. And just, uh, note that in the next two months, we just received, I would say within the last couple of days, the, uh, updated OSBA June policies that we go through the motions with. So Mrs. Mulnar and I will sit down as part of the, uh, group that reviews policy and then we'll bring, so I believe there's only five, uh, five policies that will need some revisions that they're recommending. And so we'll take a look at those to be first reading in July, second reading in August. So standard practice that we've done for a long time. But we haven't, we went through the whole policy review for the last year, so we really haven't had a lot of these, you know, quarterly updates. So that's coming along. Uh, so, Mr. Savick, would you like to address your part of the academics? And I have one thing myself, so.
We spent quite a bit of time doing a deep dive on a variety of things, uh, when we met. Um, summer school, however, is in the midst of, uh, being very busy time for the district. We've got 111 children right now, uh, in the summer school programs, including 63 at the high school, 21 at Facet. Facet, there's some individual small groups, uh, for reading at Ike that are taking place. Coy's got 33 children, Jerusalem 37. And the remainder of those kiddos are at STAR Elementary. So an opportunity for our, our children to, uh, help advance their skills heading into the upcoming school year. Uh, we did a real deep dive on the, um, on the state test scores. Um, and as you know, these are all things that are mandated down by the folks in Columbus that carry over and apply to all public school systems, uh, throughout the state of Ohio. Um, and let me put these all in perspective, first of all, in conjunction with the strategic plan for the school district. plan for the school district. One of our objectives in the strategic plan is that all 20 state-tested grade-level subject areas will perform at or above state average on an annual basis. A fully 19 of 20, 95% are above or at state average, which is nice. The one area that's been disappointing to us has been the high school geometry area, and this is something that, it's an opportunity for us to help step up our game a little bit in that area if we can in the coming year. I think that's going to be very, very important. I'd like to see, we all would like to see 100% in all those areas where we're improving at or above the state average, preferably above, far above the state average. Another strategic plan goal that's in the, in the plan is that all 20 state-tested grade-level subject areas will maintain or increase a passing percentage year over year and on an annual basis. This is where we've got some good news and we've got some opportunities. Fully 50% maintained or increased passage percentage from the previous year. We had a lot of growth in the, at high school level, with the exception of geometry. The high schools and Facet really, really stepped up their game in this process here, so that's something that we've been very pleased to see, that growth. There are opportunities, however, especially at the elementary area. Obviously, when you look at, when you look at this test scores overall, building by building, it's a mixed bag. There are opportunities, I think especially at Star Elementary. We've got opportunities in ELA in the math area that, that, something that we really, really need to focus on in the coming year, and have it as a priority for this, for, for that building and for the district. One other note, we look for positive, a positive passage trend line over a five-year period. 50% of the 20 areas have maintained a positive passage trend line, and then the other 10 we have are, again, opportunities for us. So perhaps not quite as, as nice as we would have liked to have seen, but again, we've got some opportunities, we're doing a lot of things really well, we have some areas that have some room for growth, and this is something that's going to be very important in the coming years for the district.
Good, thank you. Yeah, the whole report card thing is certainly a point of emphasis in our strategic plan. I'll just caution to say that, you know, we still gathering data, we're still deep diving, and, you know, when the actual grade cards come out in a few months, we will, you know, it might not look quite as, as the way it appears right now. I mean, there's some, you know, a lot of other factors that come in between now and the actual report card, but I do know our folks are working very, very hard, and we'll continue to address, you know, the gap areas that, that we've had for a long time, and, you know, being a 45% free and reduced district does add some additional challenges, and we have a, a high number of special needs students that also take these tests and that added the challenge, so. So we know what work put out for us, as all districts do, so I do appreciate the, the emphasis on the idea that, you know, we have goals and that we're going to continue to strive and get better at them. And so I look forward to, you know, supporting our new superintendent and, and building a plan here, because this is something that, as a board, we review our strategic plan each year, and so that's something that we need to talk about here, maybe in August or once Dr. Fritz is on board, on really what, what we want to put that emphasis on, and additional things, not just in the year-end academics, but in other areas of the district as well. So I just want to add under academics, and I don't know if this is really where it fits, but congratulate Ms. Ben and her team and, and the whole group of teachers. We had 17 that participated in her boot camp for the second annual, if you will, and I think it was even more successful than the first one, and I don't think we thought it could be topped, and I, and it was topped, and, and both have been fantastic, and I was able to sit in on at least five of the teachers, they do these end-of, end-of-course reviews, and they do a summary of their, their, their journey through these visiting of businesses. So our teachers were able to visit Herzog over in Northwood there, right, right by that Bob Evans, Cleveland Cliffs, First Solar, Ork Tool &amp; Die, Northwood Industries, and Mercy St. Vincent's, their x-ray and lab, lab areas. So you talk to these people and these teachers, it's so far different than what they do on a daily basis that it's almost beyond exciting, and so many of them share it in ours that they want to come back and do it again, although we always bring new teachers in, so hopefully we'll have a new group. But thank you, I mean, it was, it's, we're, we're doing it right here. Not all of these boot camps run like ours do, and it was wildly successful, and it does give a perspective. The whole point is to give teachers a different perspective, to help educate their kids in the area of careers, and maybe even at the little baby level, we had some.
We had a lot of kindergarten.
We had some kindergarten teachers this time.
Yeah.
So to, to apply a tool-and-die idea to a kindergarten, it's tricky, but they figure out connections, and that was what it was all about. So, good job.
And we even had an activity from First Solar that they had us do, that I would be purchasing with our career awareness dollars for all the, all the kindergarten teachers, and then at Coy, a second grade teacher. So we're excited to see how that all works out next year.
Little solar.
This is a little solar activity.
Bees or something, buzzing little things or something. Anyways, very cool stuff. So we, we do a lot, there's a lot of stuff going on that, you know, people aren't aware of, so we're proud. And just some, some updates from Mr. Sandwich under our Capitol that I just want to point out, because this is his biggest time of the year, of course. The first being, he, he pointed out here that Dean Davis is painting, and if you haven't had a chance to go see the smokestack out behind Clay, go take a look. I included a, a current picture as of today, and so you can see the eagle, and that eagle, he did the vast majority of it in the last two days. He's coming in at like 4:35 in the morning and going to about 9:00, because it gets so hot, and I think the paint gets a little too hot to paint in that, you know, 100-degree days. So, so thanks to him, and I think that'll be done probably, I'm guessing, within a week, maybe-ish. And another big piece of that, I want to do a public shout-out, and we'll do more to Jeffers Crane. They donated a gigantic crane that has truly helped Dean paint this thing quickly. It is, it is, how big? Dean, like 120? It's way bigger than he needed, but it's much bigger than he had. So if that makes sense, like he didn't know quite how he was going to do it, and those things are very, very expensive, so we want to put a shout-out. Again, this is just the first public shout-out for Jeffers, but they're a great community partner, and what a way to help us out with a really cool project. So thanks to them. And then you can just read some of the other updates. We have AC going in and Eisenhower Facet Gymnasiums, which has been one of the, a couple of the final two large spaces that we haven't had air conditioned over the, over the last decade, so excited about that.
It's raining, yes, awesome. That's, that's ESAR money too, not mudin', but that.
Yes, that was ESAR money, absolutely, very excited to use it for those that. Yeah, we get a little rain. The greenhouse and animal care facility project is underway, they tore down the greenhouse today, a good portion of it today, so it was loud and a lot of bagging, and those guys were working hard in that heat, I give them a lot of credit, but very excited about what that's going to turn out to be, can't wait to see that. And then lots happened inside the schools, PA systems, fobs, alarm monitoring, all those at the same time, I don't know what we were thinking, but we did them all at the same time, and I do know what we were thinking, we had funds to do it. But it's, it's a lot for these two sitting right in front of you, Dean and Wes, who have been working with these folks. It hasn't been perfectly smooth, it's still a little bumpy, but at the end, we're hoping it'll be fine. So they're working on it, their, summer goes very, very quick, so I know Dean's counted the days and knows percentages of how much time is left, leading up to August 1st and then eventually August 13th. So, so be careful when you're around Dean, if he's a little ouchie, it's because something's not going right, no, I'm kidding, but. So thank you to him. And that's really my report, unless there's questions about anything in particular. So, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Moving on to new business. Anybody else have new business? Okay, word discussion under, a good news report. Before we started, we really want to offer congratulations to the Lake Flyers who reached the state finals in baseball, and even though they didn't win, you know, their final game was great, finished their season. So congratulations to the Lake Flyers. Nine of our Clay athletes were named to be All League Baseball Team in the current division of the NLL. Six were named to the first team, three to the second team, and Jimmy Phillips was honored as Coach of the Year. Five of our girls were named to the All League Softball Teams, three to the first team, two to the second team, and Coach Brenda Reddival won her sixth under game this year. Tiffany Stevens, who is a Clay grad, signed a pro softball contract with the coastal band title wave of Women's Professional Fastball Fat Pitch Softball League. So I think that's a real feather in the cap to have a professional softball player, if they didn't even know they had it. So I'm proud of her. Okay, OCS has a new and updated website, thanks to Mr. Wes Barblett. It's easy to use, give it a try. The old smokestack, of course, has already been done. Tax-free days for clothing and school supplies, it's been extended to a full week this year. The dates are from July 30th to August 8th, so get that on your calendar. And registration for the '24-25 school year opens July 17th. All students have to be registered in order to go to school. That's all I have, does anybody else have anything? Okay, any need for an executive session? No? Okay, announcements of special and regular monthly meetings. Special meeting I have is June 27th, which is a Thursday at noon, and then the next regular meeting is July 16th at 6 o'clock. Anything else for the good of the board? Okay, motion, please, to end the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Sappick?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulnar?
Yes. Thank you for coming.